It's fast, it's slow.
Well, it's on. Six o'clock, Gary.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Martin Toma and the city administrator. I don't normally get involved in planning and zoning meetings except as an attendee in occasional council on a procedural matter during a planning meeting based on my experience with planning and zoning issues. These meetings, planning and zoning meetings, are rarely well attended and are usually relatively short. This one obviously is different. It is well attended, but we'd like to keep it relatively short. So, the procedure is going to be as follows. Gary Roth, who is the chairperson, will begin by calling the meeting to order, do the pledge of allegiance, approve the agenda. Dave Bova, the community development administrator, when we get to the action item, he will present the staff report that he has prepared with consideration of the planning commission. The applicant will come forward, identify themselves, and make any statement that they choose in support of their application. And anyone who wants to speak for or against the item will be allowed to come up and make a statement. In the interest of time, we ask that you keep your statements relatively short, though I haven't established a time limit. And if someone's already said what it is you wanted to say, you don't need to hear it over and over again. If you're with a group, perhaps you should identify one of your party to come up and make a statement. The final thing I want to talk about, kind of the context of this meeting, as you're aware, the state of Missouri approved a constitutional amendment that allows for the growth, production, and sale of medical marijuana in the state. Applications have been made for licenses or certificates. No decision has been made as to where these, which of the applicants will be awarded the certificates based on the formula that the state has established. But in anticipation of the possibility that someone would make an application in St. Genevieve, the Board of Alderman adopted amendments to our zoning order. It established in what zone districts medical marijuana activities could take place and some guidelines as to where they are relative to schools, daycare centers, churches, to ensure adequate separation. The city is a political subdivision of the state. These marijuana activities are legal by the voters of people. And this board's decision and consideration is to determine whether or not the applicant's proposal is consistent with our zoning ordinance. It's a land use decision. It isn't a decision as to whether they like it or don't like it, support it or don't support it. It's a decision of whether, based on their best estimate, reviewing the staff report and listening to the testimony of those who choose to speak, whether the ordinance confor, the application conforms with the ordinance. They don't make the final decision. The Board of Planning and Zoning is a, for the most part, is a recommending body. There are some things they decided later than this. And their recommendation on a zone change will go to the Board of Alderman at a future date. And you have that date?
Twenty-sixth.
On the twenty-sixth. And it's delayed because there's a fourteen-day notification period for public notice that has to happen after the planning and zoning decision has voted on their recommendation. So whatever they decide tonight, for approval or denial, that will go to the Board of Alderman as the next step. So that's my little speech. We will begin the meeting.
Okay, call meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members.
Gary Roth?
Yes.
Joe Prince?
Yes.
Justin Donovan?
Yes.
Gary Smith?
Here.
Kathleen Walts? Jeff Heidman?
Yes.
Anthony Grass? Carl Kinsky?
Here.
We have a form.
Approval of the agenda, and on the agenda we have David Kurtz is requesting a special use permit to operate a medical marijuana cultivation and manufacturing facility at 1040 Rosier Street.
I'll move to approve.
You got a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Approval of amendments from August the first, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Introduction of evidence?
Here I have the city ordinances for the city of St. Genevieve, the city of St. Genevieve Comprehensive Plan, and in front of you you have staff reports and other supporting documents that were given to me by the applicant, of which I've sent to you over the course of the past two days.
Motion to approve the evidences submitted?
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Send us some input, is there anything, anybody here for anything other than this agenda item? Okay, move on to old business?
We have none.
Move to new business. David Kurtz is requesting a special use permit to operate a medical marijuana cultivation and manufacturing facility at 1040 Rosier Street.
You have the staff report that I issued. As Gary just said, the applicant wants to operate a medical marijuana cultivation and manufacture operation at 1040 Rosier, which is currently a commercial factory use facility. Property is located in I-1 light industrial zone. You have the dimensions of the plat there. It's bordered by Valley Spring Trail on one side, Trotman, pardon me, Trotman Industrial Court on the other, Rosier Street/Highway M on one, and then by property Oaks Furniture on the back. All that lies within an industrial zone. Property does not lie within the national register boundary or within the National Landmark District. Structure is currently partially occupied in a use of F-1 factory occupancy. This use would be the same use category in F-1 factory occupancy. The applicant proposes to lease the building to Vapen MJ for the proposed use. Vapen MJ has applied to the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for a cultivation and manufacturing license, and they submitted verification of that submittal. The structure meets all distance standards required in the municipal code, is not within a thousand feet of a church, daycare, or school. It is also not within two hundred feet of a residential zone. It is also not within five hundred feet of another medical marijuana facility. Part of the stipulation you'll see under, it's on page three of the staff report, section four oh five two one, is that they shall provide a plan which reasonably shows that the facility is capable, when functioning properly, of preventing odors of marijuana from being detected by a person of ordinary sense of smell beyond the boundary of the parcel on which the facility is located. You'll see in my recommendation there are several terms and conditions. I want to go over those. Term number one would be approval from the fire chief that the proposed use will not substantially increase fire hazards. Term number two would be the facility may not be occupied until an occupancy permit is issued. The city building official is authorized to engage such expert opinion as deemed necessary to report upon any unusual technical issues that may arrive, including the filtration system to prevent odors. Any additional inspections or reports required by the city will be at the expense of the facility or business owner. The facility may not operate until, number three, the facility may not operate until confirmation is received from the state of Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services that the facility is in compliance with all requirements of Missouri Code or state regulations. Number four, submittal and approval of plans which reasonably show that the facility is capable, when functioning properly, of preventing odors of marijuana from being detected by a person of ordinary sense of smell beyond the boundary of the parcel on which the facility is located. I reiterated that, though it is already in ordinance. Number five, the owner shall maintain a business license with the city of St. Genevieve. Number six, any exterior signage or interior signage, if visible to the public, may not display or utilize any images or visual representations of marijuana plants, products, or paraphernalia, including representations that include the presence of these items, such as smoke. Number seven, no display of products shall be visible from the outside of the building. Now, this would not be a dispensary, but I added that in case they wanted to possibly display products they could not. And the final one, any commercial solid waste containers must be approved by the city and shall be in compliance with municipal code. I also want to add, Gary asked me to speak about, when I was doing the research for this meeting, and when I did research, when we did the planning and zoning piece of it, one of the concerns obviously was odor. So I took a day last week, traveled to two facilities. One in, one Atraxia LLC in Albion, Illinois, one Wellness Group Farms LLC in Anna, Illinois. The facility in Albion is a manufacturer and cultivation facility. The facility in Anna is a cultivation facility. The one in Albion is nearly the same size as this building. While I was there, though I was not allowed in, I did drive around both buildings and walk around both buildings. Driving around, there was no odor. Of course, I was a fair distance away. Walking around, as you got closer to the building, there would be an odor at approximately twenty-five to forty feet, maybe fifty feet. When I got to a hundred feet, there was no odor whatsoever. Both of these facilities are along two-lane county roads, such as this one proposed would be. No odor as I drove by. I talked to the deputy collector in the city of Albion at the city hall. They've had no complaints. I talked to Scott Harville, the Union County Sheriff for Anna and Jonesboro, Illinois. He had no complaints. I talked to a young lady who lives approximately eight hundred feet from the facility in Albion, Illinois. She had no complaints. I talked to a man named Herschel, I apologize, I forgot his last name. He runs a tractor implement store approximately nine hundred feet in front of the plant in Albion, Illinois, though I sense he was personally against it. He said he had no complaints and that they were decent neighbors and that, he said on three or four occasions over the course of three years, he would get a faint skunk smell like he had hit a skunk with his car, and after fifteen minutes, it was gone. So, I wanted to give you that information. Those, that's my report.
Mr. Kurtz, would you like to take the podium and address the board?
Yeah. I think the-
Could you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name's David Kurtz. I am a real estate partner with Vapen, also a major shareholder. I'm, you know, whenever it came up for Missouri, we have locations in other states, and they said, "Why do you want to go to St. Genevieve, Missouri?" And I said, "Well, it certainly isn't going to be the easiest place to go." As you can tell right now, it's, this is a very unordinary process for how it typically would go. But I felt like St. Genevieve has been depleted of enterprise for a long time, and one of the things that we have is that we have farming and manufacturing. That's what we do. And that's two things that fall aligned with the community already. And knowing that we could open up, you know, several hundred jobs in the sum of up to five hundred once made recreational, then this would be a good fit for the community. So, that's why we picked the city of St. Genevieve, and since I was born and raised here, I felt like it was a good place to at least start off. We could have went to two other counties and been approved, but this is where we wanted to be. We felt like the employment here is lacklustering, and in addition to that, we also felt like the quality of labor and the quality of craftsmanship that people take to is unparalleled to a lot of other districts. So, that's the reason that we're here.
Board, any questions for Mr. Kurtz? Have you had any odor complaints at any of the other facilities that you've operated?
We have not. Now, some, some of the things that we don't know is, whenever Mr. Bova went over and checked out those facilities, I have no clue what kind of filtration system they had. They could have had a cheap two, three million dollar filtration system. Whenever you go outside of one of our facilities, which Mr. Rosen is going to go over the details and specs of, there's no odor. I, you know, I mean, whenever you, whenever you buy a vehicle, you can buy a high-end vehicle, you can buy a low-end vehicle, there's everything in between. And we pride ourselves on, this is like a Pfizer facility. You're not walking into, you know, I, I think the misconception is that you're going to go in somewhere and you're going to see, you know, people just in regular street clothes and, you know, everybody is in scrubs, everybody scrubs in, scrubs out. David's going to speak about securities as well, but it's, 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 to our attention, it's never been brought from the city, from the state, or from any neighbors, to date, on all of our facilities.
How long have they been there?
You know, I'm, I am, Dave has all of the detailed information on that. I don't want to give you, I don't want to misquote you four or five months, so I'll let him give you the particulars.
I do have a question in regards to, David had sent us several of the state applications that you had filled out. In a, in one of the, the applications, it was for a dispensary. Is that for this location, or is that for?
No, absolutely not. This is, this is going to be nothing more than cultivation and manufacturing. You would never know it's there. If we didn't, you know, in the event that, hypothetically speaking, which we're not, but in the event that we were, if you drove by, you would never know that anyone was doing any other activity in there, other than what's already currently being done in there. Other than you might see a few more cars out there because we're going to have, you know, several more employees.
Mr. Rosen, would you go ahead to speak?
Yeah, absolutely. So, thank you so much, first of all. My name's David Rosen, I work for a company called Vapen. I do the actual operation and running of the business. Mr. Kurtz is a landlord, he's invested into our company, but when it comes to the technical aspects, the operational procedures, and traditionally how these facilities have been opened, I've been in charge of that. So, I've personally had the experience of doing special use permits and planning and zoning meetings in Clark County, Las Vegas, Nevada, Phoenix, Arizona, California, Oklahoma, outside Boston, Massachusetts. We have seven states and seven locations. It's always been myself and a planning and zoning gentleman. They stamp the paper, so I'm excited that there's so many people here that I can explain a little bit about what we, what we do and what these places really are. This isn't about personal beliefs or anything like that. For me, this is just about business. With regards to your staff report, the odor, I know is going to be a big topic. The reason why we've had the success that we've had is we use what's called ionized polarization of the molecules within the HVAC systems. So what we do is we put technology inside of the air conditioning units, they're all self-contained units per room. So, they're all treated with two-stage carbon filters, they're also treated with ionization systems for changing the molecular structure of the odor, right? So, Mr. Kurtz touched on several different topics. I can't really touch on the community, other than at its core, this is farming and this is manufacturing, and those are the jobs that we're offering. That's what we would look to do in the community. It is not a dispensary, there are no customers, there aren't, there's, no one can purchase anything at this facility. It's strictly production. Everyone, as he had mentioned, has a full seed-to-sale protocol with the state of Missouri, where they track and monitor from seed to sale of each plant. Everything is weighed, everything is documented. We employ PhD-level plant scientists, we employ PhD-level chemists for the manufacturing. We have a strong set of protocols that has allowed us to go from five people to a publicly traded company on the Canadian Stock Exchange, and we profited over fifteen million dollars last year at one facility. So, the group that you're dealing with is someone that's capable of assisting the community as opposed to hindering it. So I hope you guys take that with a little bit of weight, depending on your decision. I hope you view it as an opportunity from a group of people that have the caliber to do it correctly, that have the integrity to do it right, even in a community that's not familiar with some of the steps. So, for what it's worth, that's kind of my two cents is, I've turned over full fire code, full plans, full safety, ASME, UL-listed certified equipments used, everything is top shelf. So, hopefully the city's had a chance to look through some of that stuff. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Somebody like to address the board from the audience?
I have a question.
That's it.
I don't want to go up.
Get over there.
I'm sure a lot of people are wondering about this. Is it going to be operating twenty-four-seven, seven days a week?
Operating? Yeah.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the plants say they'll take a day off.
Yeah. Because I'm sure a lot of people were wondering, is it going to go twenty-four-seven? So, that was just one of my questions.
I'm Teddy Ross, I live at eleven forty-five Valley Spring Trail in St. Genevieve. And I want to thank the zoning board and everything for having this open meeting for us. I got a few questions. And one was about, is this going to go through before there's a certificate issued as far as the zoning and everything? So, it will be zoned?
Yes, we wrote that into, we wrote that into the zoning ordinance that because they need to prepare, they can apply for this in advance of the certificate, but one of the stipulations of actually operating would be to receive the certificate from DHSS.
Okay, and the other thing was, as far as, well, was it David, Dave?
Yes.
What kind of salaries are we looking at as far as, you know, like, you got these other places that employ people?
Free to answer that question. It's not a question the planning and zoning issue would be dealing with, they're looking at whether or not it's appropriate land use.
Okay, so this could be brought up when it comes in from the-
Because the Board of Alderman-
The Board of Alderman.
The Board is free to consider and think about anything they want to think about. Planning and zoning needs to limit itself to the land use question.
Okay. I think all minds for the city's board. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have a problem answering it if you want me to answer it. That's up to you. Yeah, if, we would offer jobs, range of information. You might mistake. I don't even know what it is. You're on, you're on television. No, that's a fair question. Again, as with any other industry or any other job, we would offer entry-level positions, base pay generally starting at twelve dollars an hour, up to the more experienced-based learning positions, if you had agriculture history, if you had some knowledge of plant science, up to a six-figure-a-year position. This is going to be, these locations, we hire from within. We don't, we don't bring people from other states to these locations. We have a standard operating procedures and manuals to train for each position.
My name is Matthew Bosner, I've come here with two hats. One hat is I'm the chief medical officer of the hospital, and also I'm a homeowner in Valley Spring Estates, which is right behind the area. And I had, my first question is, have you all ever done a facility in a small community, as ours community, the communities you mentioned was Las Vegas, Phoenix, are the large communities? Have you put a facility in a small community such as St. Genevieve?
Go ahead. Fair question. We're currently about to start operation in January in a town called Medill, Oklahoma, which is very, which is smaller, same size as St. Genevieve. But again, as far as with a track record of multiple years, no, they've been in the more established cities because we only operate compliant legal businesses, and those cities have been the first to actually grant us permission to do so, until now. So, our facility in Medill, Oklahoma, is about the same size, but again, this is just a distribution hub. There is no sales, there is no customers.
Well, and the reason is, you know, as you go through the process with the zoning board and the other regulatory committees and such for the community, I mean, the culture is very different in a small community as a large community. And, you know, the banking, you know, issues and, you know, the, how you deal with money in your business is very different because you just can't go to banks and this and that. And as you go through the whole process, it's very different in our town of four thousand people versus, you know, Phoenix of five million or, you know, whatever they have. The other question I had, you know, living in our subdivision, which is just behind, you know, where your proposed, your proposed facility, you know, is there, you're going to go through the whole process of going through, I guess it's called, you know, the process of, you know, looking at, you know, looking at the water flow and all the environmental impact studies and such, because there's, in our community, there's a huge mining, you know, several mining companies, and underground, there's a lot of caves and water flow and such, and it's a huge issue here. And, you know, under our community, in our residential community, there's a lot of, you know, mines that have been there for years, and water flow is a big issue. You know, I'm just building a house, you know, in our subdivision, and we had to have, you know, maps and, and engineers, you know, assess the area just under our home, just to make sure that the water flow and, and everything was intact, and, you know, that it's a huge issue, you know, in the area where you are, which is just outside of, you know, where our, many of the residents here, you know, live in this subdivision, it's a huge issue just by our, by our community and those businesses, you know, that would impact, and the water flow and the efflux of water and waste, and waste from your facility, you know, is a huge issue.
Right. My response to that would be, I don't know when this building was built, but anytime you do a new structure, they do the geological surveys of the ground below. Any of our facilities, we have no problem putting a sanddowel interceptor, any type of, any water that flows through the facility is purified and cleaned before any waters is exited, right? So, that's not a new thing at all. We have that for most all of them. But those aren't my things really to volunteer. I go off anything that the city, the jurisdiction, municipality says, "These are our protocols, these are our laws, this is what you need to do." That's what I do. Mr. Rosen, did you, you sent me information that at peak you would need three to five thousand gallons of water a day. Right. So I verified with Alliance Water today that that is readily available. Right.
I assume any, any wastewater that's being treated probably will go back into the sewer system, or is that dumped in another manner?
Right, well, we use several-step filtration systems, reverse osmosis systems in, and then whatever hasn't made it into the facility will go to waste because we haven't done anything with it. We put it through filters, where it separates out wastewater, is what it's called. It's not actually been through plants, nothing like that. That goes to waste, and then the other ones come back through a multiple-step filtration system and then out of it. It would, but it's, it's all treated.
Okay, just a final point, just for your own educational information, as a medical community and as a, as the medical provider for this community, we have made, and after extensive due diligence, we have decided to not enter into the- and after extensive due diligence, we have decided to not enter into the, into the realm of being a medical provider for medical marijuana in the community. So we're not going to be providing medical cards, you know, for any, in any of our medical facilities through our providers in the community. And that, and we've done evaluations in any of our clinics and our hospitals in the community and we have seven clinics. And with our employees, we're not going to have any tolerance for use of medical marijuana in any of our facilities. So, you know, we'll be happy to discuss that, you know, kind of with you. And that's just for informational purposes and, you know, we'll be happy to discuss with you as the process, you know, proceeds, you know, about kind of our, you know, feeling and how we've decided to deal with this as a medical community, community here.
Right.
And we've engaged, you know, many other members of the community in our decision-making process.
Right.
Okay? And thank you very much and we really appreciate the board, you know, allowing other community members to kind of discuss this in an open forum. Thank you.
My name is Ron Coleman and I want to piggyback on what Dr. Bosner said a little bit, but I also want to business in that industrial park and as a lot of you are aware in here, that's my main concern is the odor. That's actually my only concern. And I understand the filtration systems, you can get the Cadillac and they're supposed to be really good from the research I've, I've seen. My question is, what happens if we do get an odor after you're up and running that goes outside of your boundary, that goes into Oaks Furniture Shop or goes into my factory or worse yet, goes back into the subdivision, which is downwind from your operation? What is the recourse for the citizens or the city if there is odor?
It's a condition of the special use permit, so if there were a complaint, I would, or whoever's in this position, the community development administrator or the city administrator would come out and go through the standard process. There'd have to be a complaint first, especially because we're talking about odor. It's not something I can see. And then I would issue, I mean, I would go the standard route, there's a courtesy letter that I would send to them and then we could issue a notice of violation, which again, the standard process. And if it wasn't corrected, we could withdraw the standard, the special use permit. And I think, you know, that's part of why I put this in here. I once lived in Valley Spring, so I don't want any of my folks that I know very well having to deal with that on a personal note. And, you know, that's why that stipulation is literally in the ordinance and in the special use permit. And though I'm not an engineer by any means, in addition to carbon filtration, they have this ionization, which also draws the particles out. Certainly not, you know, talking for them, but I want folks to know that it's in the plan.
Okay. Joe?
My question after listening to you is, what type of safeguards are in place, are going to be in place at your plant for when the power goes out and the filtration systems aren't running?
Yeah, it's a great question. Can I answer?
Sure.
That's a great question. We have, so, one thing that hasn't been brought up is our whole security system is on its own power source. It's a generated power system that's internal. To, beyond the odor is the fear of theft, burglary, cutting of the power, any of those things. So it's on its own independent system where if the power goes down, we have a generator that runs the rolling cameras, that's set up to the police department to notify them, that's hooked up to the fire department if there's an issue and that will keep that stuff going. It's beyond, you know...
Including scrubber systems.
Right. Including lights, fans. If the power goes out, we use ten to twelve million dollars in crops. I think we can all agree that's not that, that's a bigger concern of mine, you know? We have things in place.
All right, thank you.
Bob?
My name is Bob Donovan. I'm a lifelong resident of St. Genevieve and when Mr. Kurt spoke a while ago, he led us to the fact of up to five hundred jobs in a facility of seventy-seven thousand square feet. How in the world would you put that many people in there?
So, yeah, I'm sure you can jump in, but I don't know how many people were there prior to us speculating about working there, but I understand close to five hundred were there prior to us, working in the business. If not, that's fine.
Well, I'm not worried about the previous, I'm worried about your operation.
Okay, my operation at thirty-five thousand square feet in Phoenix, Arizona employs one hundred and sixty-two people. If you multiply that by two, you're at three hundred. That doesn't include outside sales, that doesn't include the street team, that doesn't include marketing, accounting, legal representation, or any of the other ancillary jobs that are attached to our business. That almost puts you at five hundred.
And in that facility and stuff, that's a pretty large acreage and stuff there, any plans for expansion?
I'm just trying to get a special use permit.
All right, thank you.
Somebody else have their hand up?
I did, but he answered my question.
Oh, okay.
I wondered if he, if he felt that the facility that they're looking at was large enough for their startup or if they were going to turn around and have to rather they expand or rent more land.
And I will volunteer this information. With respect to the employee numbers, it's a, it's a scale, it's a model of scale. You do, you build it out in phases and as the market matures and demand grows and accounts happen, employment happens, you know? If, if there is no work, you know what I'm saying? So...
It would be the amount of startup employment.
Between fifty to a hundred people. Fifty people, very, very, very conservatively, out of the gate.
I have a question. My name's Paul Hasler. My concern, you know, when I've been listening to you all, and I read a Facebook post by David, and you're banking on starting with medical marijuana, but your hope, I believe, is according to that Facebook, is for recreational marijuana. That's where the, where the money is really, I think, it's going to be a lot more money in that. Now, that's not legal and look at it, it could be at any time. It's right across the river, so that is our hope, you know? And I look, I deal with a lot of people in this community that have been, their lives have been changed drastically because of drugs. And I'm not here to talk about pros and cons of it, but there's, in our community, you know, we have, we sacrifice kids every year because of alcohol, because of drugs, and I just have a problem with that. I have a problem with what you just said about your security system, theft, burglary. Those are things that you're protecting against, but why do you have to do that? Because people want to come in there and do, and get in to get something that they, that they want. And here, we're going to add that to the community. And like I said, I know this is a process here, this planning and zoning, but these are concerns that, that, man, I, and like I said, I'm not here to preach about drugs and alcohol, but it's just a big concern. You know, what, what are we, what are we opening the door to? You know? And it's just personal right there for me.
Yeah, understood. I, I think I would combat that with how much data do you have to support that it was medical marijuana versus alcohol? I think alcohol in this community growing up was a far larger concern than the drug was in high school in particular.
I hate to interrupt this conversation, but it really isn't a pertinent land use question.
All right. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mark.
Anyone else?
All right, Gary.
Mike Brady from seven two five Playmound. And I just wondered, Dave or Mr. Rosen, anybody, is there a place that's kind of like-for-like if citizens of Valley Spring or Hospital community want to take a field trip like you did? I know where you went isn't exactly that operation, but sometimes it helps if people get a feel for it on their own, how, what it really smells like.
Any recommendations?
I would have to ask you about the legalities from a state perspective as far as the Arizona facility. I don't know what that consists of to be able to get people in from a legal perspective if they're not registered with the state under an umbrella.
Yeah, any of the facilities that we operate, you have to have a full background check, federal background check, city background check, the state background check before you can enter the facility.
Okay, but no tips on anything that is known that is within the area, like where you went, Dave or?
So the closest that I'm aware of is Illinois and they're all independently, I don't know anything in Illinois and I don't, I don't really know anybody in Illinois.
And we would comfortably say the filtration system may or may not be comparable?
Yeah, I have no idea. I didn't even know you went somewhere, to be honest with you.
So, the list of facilities that receive certificates in Illinois is a public, is public information. You can go to the state of Illinois, as I did, dig into it and you can find the address of the facilities that received their certificates. Albion is a very similar community. Small community, central Illinois. It, the facility sits semi-out of town, similar to this one, as you're leaving town, I guess is what I mean to say. It has houses around it, it has businesses around it, it has fields around it. The facility in Anna, again, similar, sits as kind of as you're leaving town, it might even be just outside the city limits, on the county line. No houses, well, no, there's probably a house within eight hundred feet. There's not a subdivision, but again, houses. There's also a dentist's office approximately five hundred feet away and an assisted living facility approximately twelve hundred feet away. So, I don't know if that's the information you're looking for. Albion's about three hours away, Anna's about an hour and a half away.
Well, specifically my question geared towards if I owned a house in Valley Spring and I had concern, which I would, I would get in my car and I would go do what you did. So, I just want to put that out there.
And that's why I did that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dave.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm going to kind of jump back on topic, so...
We got somebody in here.
Okay. I'm going to ask this question real quick. So, if what may or may not be inevitable of the legalization for recreational use, is this going to be available to dispense at just any, any retail location? And are we talking, somebody's going to be able to buy this at a gas station or anything of that nature?
Our ordinance would not allow that. It only allowed it in certain zones of the Bronx.
Like if, if, whenever it is legalized for recreational use?
Then there's a whole nother set of statutes that would have to be followed, wouldn't allow retail sales.
Out of that nobody.
In the new state.
Right.
Yeah, but they could go for a variance, right?
Uh, is this thing on?
Yes, that's on.
I don't hear myself. Okay, my name is Don Rapp and I live a little ways from the facility.
By the way, are you going to take down the Sabre Liner sign?
I think so.
Absolutely.
Don't give a false impression, that's all I'm saying. I understand TG in Perryville is not able to come up with the numbers on workforce, so they're going to move an operation somewhere in Kentucky. So I wonder if about the five hundred down the road, if you can get that many people out of this community. What I'm fearful of is a bait, hook and switch. This is not the end game, folks. This is just the tip of the iceberg. And we can change regulations, we can expand recreational marijuana. My son lives in California and Colorado. And if you got that stuff in your system, they can detect it. Maybe the medical profession can prove me on this three months out? Three months out? So he says, hey, you better not go to work with that stuff in your system, whether it's medical or otherwise. Grounds for elimination. So you've got to be careful. There's a lot of, I read the paper here a couple of weeks ago about what the lawyers was telling the Alderman. This is all getting very convoluted, folks, trying to navigate this stuff. Going down the road, much less right now, you don't even know how this whole thing's going to shake out. But really what I'm afraid of is a bait, hook and switch. We get it all the time. Sorry, folks, but the water park, in my opinion, was a bait, hook and switch. It's doing well now, but we'll see down the road. Hope it continues. But anyway, I just don't think we should let the tip of the iceberg in because we got a lifetime ahead of us. The next generation comes along, what are they going to do? So anyway, that's all I have to say. Oh, by the way, things break. Carbon filters load up, ionization systems break. Mississippi Lima Underground is right there.
My name is Kristen Chibidi. I live at three fifty Roberts. The culture has really changed, but the facts have not changed. Drugs have always been considered very dangerous, it's just that now our culture accepts them. And you guys have come up with some legal stuff to, you know, as long as they check off the boxes, that they can, they'll be allowed to do this stuff, but we didn't have anything to do with that. We weren't a part of those decisions that you came up with for these, you know, checklist that they're going to have, the hoops they're going to have to jump through. And so I just feel kind of left out of that process, but one thing that you keep, they keep saying over and over again is that we guys, we can make a whole lot of money off of this. Well, I don't think it's a good idea to make money off of something that is very dangerous. I mean, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of bad things that make a lot of money. Like, why don't we open up a prostitution ring? I mean, that's a kind of extreme example, but the way our culture is going, that's, you know, that kind of lifestyle is becoming more and more accepted also. Are we going to say, hey, that'll open up a whole lot of jobs if we open up that kind of, that's, that's an extreme example. But I'm just saying, if something is bad, you don't sugarcoat it by saying, hey, we'll make a whole lot of money off of it. And they talk about the scientific stuff, you know, what are they saying, ozone or, all, all of these technical terms to kind of hypnotize us into thinking that this is something very scientific and safe. It's dangerous. They slipped in that word recreational and I hope everybody caught that. There's, like he said, there's a bigger game afoot here and I don't care how much money you make off of it, but you guys will be sanctioning something that has done a whole lot more bad than it's done good. Maybe a small percentage of the population can benefit from medical marijuana, but let's face facts, the vast majority of people aren't taking this stuff for medical problems. They're doing it to get high and then what happens when they get high? The next time it doesn't work so well, so they have to find a better high. The marijuana that's out there right now is so much more powerful than it was back in the sixties or whatever and it's only going to get more and more powerful and more and more dangerous. And you guys are going to be sanctioning that when you okay these people.
Well, I feel constrained and I don't really think it would be appropriate to voice my opinion on the constitutional amendment, but obviously we couldn't approve a building for prostitution because prostitution's illegal and the voters of this state have approved...
Now, this is an example to illustrate a point.
I know, but the point that I'm trying to make is that we're here as a planning and zoning commission and the voters have approved medical marijuana. And, and that's the constitutional amendment that has passed. We seem to have, in my opinion, kind of a tradition of sometimes not accepting the decision of the voters of the state. We've certainly had that with respect to right to work. And I think, right or wrong, this constitutional amendment exists and our decision should be based on the regulations that we have here and the laws that the voters have passed.
I just want to add one thing that I appreciate your opinion, but I want to reiterate, this board, nor the board of Alderman, should they vote, are sanctioning this. This was sanctioned by the state of Missouri in constitutional amendment number two. This board would give permission for this use to be on this piece of land. The board of Alderman would then have the choice to approve or deny that. Yes, sir? Yes, sir? Yes, sir?
I'm Joe Scholow. I'm a general surgeon here in the community. I actually live in the county. My, my comments are directed toward planning and zoning, as we hope that planning and zoning is looking at the future of our community and where our community is going and how our community is reflected in the views of people around us, hoping that with time we will grow as a healthy community. Marijuana, THC is not well-studied. The use of medical marijuana is a term, and a term that I don't think many people recognize. A lot of things today that we use, that we feel comfortable with, are FDA-approved. The danger in marijuana and medical marijuana as it exists, and as you consider from planning and zoning, are we providing housing for something that is safe, that we can consider high quality? I'm not arguing with the quality of what they're producing, but what I'm saying is when something is non-regulated, something is not controlled, studies have not been done, we know that problems can occur. Just today, we heard about vitamin E acetate that's, now we know it's vape, found in cannabis that were making a lot of people sick. I mean, it's a problem because of lack of regulation. Do we want to be represented as a community, supporting something by allowing housing of something that is not regulated, that is not controlled, that has inherent risk and dangers to it? I mean, we don't know what's in most of the CBD that you're using. We, you know, THC, who can tell when you're token, what you're actually token? Now, they're not dispensing, but the comment earlier, residential use, it is the next step. I'm concerned about the youth of our community. I'm concerned about pregnant females in the community. I'm concerned about the view that the community may see if planning and zoning says it's okay to proceed, and people who don't know the details of the unsafety nature of this all of a sudden feels, well, it may be okay. We can't accept things that have not measured up. We should hold higher standards. It's just my opinion.
Many is Bob Dunham. I'm sorry to have to come up here again, but something came to mind about the facility. You know, you guys have shared with us that you're willing to use top-shelf equipment in doing this. What proof are you willing to give us? Because our building codes don't require any of those specific details about any of those filtration, water purification. What are you willing to give us before we would approve this that says this is what's gonna be used in that plant?
I have the code of state regulations here, too. I mean, there are several sections on filtration. It's not in the building code, but it is in the code of state regulations.
Okay, so our building codes are bound by that?
They are bound. They would be bound by the special use permit that says they have to abide by those sections of the code of state regulations.
So those codes of regulations, do they deal with specifics in the equipment and the performance of that equipment?
They deal with odor, they deal with filtration, they don't deal with specifics because they're allowed to use what machinery and filtration system and extraction system that they want, as long as they meet those codes.
I know what a lot of those specialty type of applications, we deal with parts per million and those type of things. I mean, that's the specifics I'd be looking for.
That is what we provide. We provide third-party testing of parts per million on a full panel of what is inside of it, and we can all go down a deep, long road about what's not regulated, but that's because it's federally not regulated. I abide by all the city laws, I abide by all of the state laws, that's who regulates us. If it's FDA, all these things, those are federal agencies. That's a totally separate thing from the state you live in and what your residents voted for.
And is that testing something that you do on a periodic basis?
Every batch of every product that leaves our location in the state law has to be tested at parts per million for impurities, microbial, mold, additives, fertilizer, there's a full panel of it.
There's a C O A on everything.
The certificate.
And so a lot of it is just, you know, we can sit here all night, but...
And I hate to keep saying this, this is not a land use question. So you'll have an opportunity as Board of Aldermen to talk about a full range of issues that you may have related to this. This should be limited to land use.
Yes?
My name is Willa Rat, and I live on 745 Gettner Street. And I guess my question is, the city really pushed the DARE program. I sat through the DARE program. The DARE program told the kids that marijuana was an entrance drug into drugs. So how are you gonna explain it back to the kids? What kind of relationship are the policemen gonna have with these children? Secondly, he mentioned there was gonna be no sales in here. Well, then he mentioned sales. You know, we're gonna move to the recreational with this. It's just one step. We don't want this in St. Genevieve. We want our county to stay away. If it's gonna be a historical district, let's move towards that direction. We need some business in here. We don't need this, this kind of, this kind of thing. And what about the workers that have to work in that place? How are they protected? They have to be in there eight hours a day.
We're taught land use.
Question, I'll leave.
Okay, but that's the way I feel about it. I think that we don't need that in our town.
I mean, it's, it doesn't pertain to land use, however, everybody else seemed to be able to, so I just wanted to be able to address some of it. I think one of the concerns, pardon my apologies, one of the concerns that everyone continues, continuously brings up is how people in the community are gonna be on it. Even if we get recreational, it's not gonna have a dispensary to sell it here. If their kids are gonna get it, they're gonna go to Illinois to get it. They're not getting it from us.
You're not gonna provide a dispensary, right?
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, if someone else does in the town, but that's, that's not what we're here for. We're, we're here to go for medical use only to other dispensaries. And I think there's a major misconception that everybody has about marijuana, because now that we've been in the industry for a lengthy amount of time, and we've saw the Harvard studies, we saw the Yale studies with 1,100 participants, that's a major study. There's not a whole lot of studies with 1,100 people.
It's not controlled.
Right, understood. So there's, there's, you know, a certificate of analysis on every single thing that we do. No one in the community is gonna get it. The state watches all of our, they regulate all of our cameras, so they can watch everything. No one is leaving out of the building to the community with it. It's, you have a far better chance of bringing bombs through TSA. So I think that there's, I think one of the things that needs to get put to rest is I've saw this ridiculous post on home values. Home values are based on cyclical cycles. We could go to any of the communities that we have in currently. I have a home in Nevada in Tahoe, great community. They allow medical marijuana. You know what? Nobody's house has done anything but went up. Your house could go down, for sure, and it's not gonna be because of medical marijuana, it's gonna be because of a cyclical cycle in, in the real estate market. It's gonna follow a trend with the real estate market. It has absolutely nothing to do with the medical marijuana dispensary. And I want to put, put out the fire of everybody thinking that there's gonna be drugs running around in the community. There's no plant gonna jump up and run into our facility, and I can assure you of that. And, and I want, I want to know, I want you to know, too, I mean, everybody here, that this is not, that's not what we're intending on doing. This is a manufacturing cultivation facility, which St. Genevieve does and does at best with incredible workers. And that's why we're here. And that's, I mean, that's, that's the end of the story for, for me and for everybody else. And if there's ever an issue, they're gonna bring it to our attention, and I can assure you that we will address the situation immediately. That's not our intent for this community at all. We want to bring, like I said, we could've went to Cape Girardeau County. They wanted us, they begged us to go there in three different locations that they showed us from the city. The city showed us.
And we didn't go there because we want to go right here.
Thank you for your time.
Does anybody else have any points that have not been addressed yet? So we don't keep hearing the same thing over and over?
Gary, real quick, just a question, there will be a public hearing on the 26th, right?
If there's approval, just as any process, it would go to the Board of Aldermen. If it's denial, it will go to you, but there's not a public hearing per se.
Okay. Just, just checking to make sure people that want to talk outside of the land use topic have a...
Absolutely. If this board approves or recommends approval, then there will be a public hearing on September 26th, and that will be posted in the paper.
Hello, my name is Mark Nagar. We have business gentlemen trying to open a legal business and bring jobs to this community. All the questions are, have something to do with something else. They're, they're opinions or whatever. This is just gentlemen from a business trying to open a legal business concern in this area producing jobs. Thank you.
All right, David. Two more.
Hello, I'm Nathan Cabaz. I live on North Forest Street. I got a question about the odor. You guys said you hadn't had any complaints about it? That's correct. Why does the question arise, then? I think the question arises because of lack of information. I think that, I think that anytime that we don't, it's like going in the dark as a little kid. We don't know what's in the room, so we're scared. But although whenever you hit the lights, there's nothing. So everyone's always concerned about it, but there is nothing. I think initially, some of the concern comes from the inception 10 years ago, whenever California started off, and they started off without filtration systems, and then moved to a single-system carbon filter, and then a double-system carbon filter, and now we've went well beyond that. And I think as times progressed, obviously, like anything, it's like cars back in the 30s certainly weren't as reliable as they are today. Everything has progressively got better, but from the inception, I think some of the stigma was based on some of the original California grow hops.
And it does smell if you don't do anything about it. The plant smells if you don't treat it. That's why people are concerned. Everyone in this room said they'd never been to a facility. That's why they're concerned.
One person.
One person.
I actually had as well. I used to live in California before it became recreational. I had a medical license, I used it, I liked it. I've lived around facilities that manufactured, sold.
We talked a lot about...
The data out there, the facts out there, but there's nothing backing up what I've been hearing. It's easy to demonize marijuana before we know what it's really about. It really is. We can talk about it not being regulated, we can talk about it not being FDA-approved. Whenever we talk about the FDA, what do they approve? I grew up in the generation where giving amphetamines to children was okay. I was on Adderall. A kid, 12, because I was a little eccentric. That's not right. So just because something's not FDA or is FDA-regulated, doesn't mean it's always great for everybody. I'm an advocate, so that's where I stand with that.
One more.
My name is Regina Berfignor, and I live on Jefferson Street. I'm not saying that I approve or disapprove of marijuana use. I'm saying that my point is that if these young men wanted to bad enough put a facility in our community, they could get around all of this by going right outside of our city limits, because we don't have zoning in it by our community, correct?
In the county.
In the county. So, you know, if we give them enough trouble, they could easily go two miles out into the county, buy some land, build their building, and our city would lose all of the tax money that we're looking at now. I'm, again, I'm not saying that I approve or disapprove of their facility itself, I'm saying they're trying to bring jobs, money to our community, and we're all fighting it. Quite honestly, we do have a drug problem in this community. I've been dealing with it a long time in my neighborhood, and it has nothing to do with marijuana. It's a lot of other things, and I don't know where they come from, but it's a huge problem, and I don't think everybody realizes how bad it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board have any more questions? I have a motion.
Any discussions?
Any questions for me?
Are you looking for a motion to...
If there's no more questions?
For approval or not?
I would make a motion to approve the special use permit.
I have a motion, and I have a second, I have a real...
Hold on just a second. Who is the second?
Yeah. Motion to recommend approval. Gary Roth?
Yes.
Joe Prince?
Yes.
Justin Donovan?
Yes.
Gary Smith?
No.
Jeff Edman?
Yes.
Carl Kinsky?
Yes.
Motion for recommended approval passes 512.
Once again, this notification will be heard by the Board of Aldermen on September... I was waiting for you guys.
September 26th.
Motion.
Second.
Oh, a favor.
Yeah, we may go to a bear hall.